Yeah, I need to talk to you about next Monday because we have our season announcement. And I can't, it starts at 7:00 and it kind of goes till like 8:15. I should just try to hold the meeting, you know what I mean? If there's nothing kind of personal.
And even if you just can stay through the meeting, through the agenda. And then not stay for four or five hours.
Yeah, hate to do that, but we'll talk about it. I don't mind doing both, you know what I mean? I don't, I've already started my work, I'm like, if I could be there, I want to be there, you know?
I know. I hate to lose after society.
Well, it's not about enjoying it, it's about me working. Because groups, there's groups leading through that night that have to be there for it to take orders. But that's not until after. We won't order until after, so.
What the heck is wrong?
That's a lot.
Somebody told.
Well, considering the fact that this plant is always spot on with its environment.
All right, so now I gotta make sure my sign, all right? How many buttons here? What committee was that?
You have no idea?
Yes, 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 that one I know.
Was it the mayor found that it was in there?
About the attorney.
Oh. Give me ten. Good.
How are you doing? Good. Yeah, yeah, I love it. Please, please tell me. It's every part of my life.
The numbers are going down. Quite as many issues.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Chair. If I may, we'll call our meeting of intergovernmental relations that's in order this afternoon. And if I can, I'll call Paul LaFonde up to entertain the Scotia Sewer Inter-Municipal Agreements.
The information you have is pretty timely to enter into an intermunicipal agreement. It's Nova Scotia from the treatment of the other sewer sludge. It's treating the Seascamp and Eastwast Water Treatment Plant. Contract that we have time to review. Allows a 2 million gallons per day circular order, which is based on the current sewer use ordinance and our city code. So going forward, it's a very fair agreement. Clarifies everything that we have left in place for us. It's a five-year agreement.
And as I understand, this is not a new agreement. This is just an extension of the current agreement that we had in place. Another five-year agreement, correct?
It's really not an extension. It's structured new. It's a new agreement with regards to clarifying some issues that had been clarified in the past.
In the past. Okay. Let's go.
Yes, so I certainly saw all the fees that were charged in Scotia. But I didn't see anywhere cost to the city. I assume this is, we're making a small profit at least on this?
Publicly, you say we're just breaking even.
Okay, that's fine. Let me ask my question a different way. Is there any way we could lose money by providing this service to the village of Scotia?
It covers the cost of the waste strength that they bring over. So it does cover all the costs if the waste strength is increased. And this contract is based on a total mass loading. So they get a total loading per day extrapolated out to the year. So they get X number of tons. If they go over those tons, they pay an additional fee, whether it's additional flow, additional BOD, or additional TSS, they have to pay those fees.
As I spoke to Mr. LaFonde earlier, we're gonna try to get some kind of dollar figure what the village of Scotia might be in fact saving through this agreement. Not having to build a pump house, obviously. And I would just.
Well, they have a pump station. But for them to treat their own waste, they would have to either rebuild or restructure the wastewater treatment plant. The regulatory regulations to receive on the water, they're changing all the time, becoming more stringent. So they have to deal with the speed permit, annual inspections, permit compliance, energy costs, disposal costs. It's all built into our fee and we set our fees.
Any other questions?
What's the volume you're looking at?
The volume, they have a contractual volume. We can treat 2 million gallons per day.
And that's what I expected from them?
There will be under that. But what it is, is we give them a volume. If they go over that volume on an annual basis, they'll pay an additional fee to us.
That isn't on those 80 pages of contract agreement there? That's there. Any other questions? All right, I need the motion.
I'll move it.
And I'll second it, all in favor. All right. And there's a second piece to it. There's a resolution related to this intermunicipal government agreement.
And that is to clarify, the past agreement had some lines that had to be clarified with regards to surcharges or additional surges if it wasn't developed based on a mass loading. So there was some concerns with how there was being calculated. So this clarifies all the past surcharges and we move forward into a new agreement that is very likely, it clarifies everything.
Any questions?
I believe it's fair for both entities and it also allows for potential future growth and provides a model for other entities that the city is gonna keep wastewater treatment plants services.
Now, has their village board voted on, or will be voting on this as well? They did already?
They did. So they've approved their end of it. So it's moved here, it's been moved to Mayor McCarthy's signature.
Very good.
And this is, we'll use this agreement as a base agreement for all their intermunicipal agreements.
Very good. I appreciate all the work your office and the mayor, and of course David Franc has done. And this is exactly what we're talking about, sharing services, working together cooperatively throughout the county. And again, just like the governor's budget is looking for, looking for these shared services. Well, I guess.
I shared some.
All right, he shared the services there. All right, Ms. Brazel, we have the motion?
Yep, sure.
And I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and any other business come before us?
I'm a weager.
And I'll second that, all in favor? Thank you very much, Paul.
I got through that without ending any jokes.
You've done good. Related to sewer?
You're on.
Oh.
You're on?
Yes, I am. Very good. Let me call the Finance Committee to order 2015 bond anticipation note, Mr. Ferrari.
Good evening, everyone. Councilor, President Mayor. The Finance Department is requesting that the City Council to issue some bond anticipation notes for the borrowing for the 2015 capital projects. Originally, the capital project was adopted, it was $23.2 million. But since the adoption, we have determined that only $8,935.79 needs to be borrowed. Specifically because we're moving the $14 million for the construction costs of the consent order. And the roundabout has, we've got more state money, $278,000 from the state to reduce that specifically. Our second request is also to roll our previous band that we had, 2007 and then 2011 through 2014, which totaled $31.05 million. And we're asked us to roll over into a new band because at this time, there's no need to be permanently financed. We have anticipated that with the rollover of the capital project and the rollover of the previous bands, our interest rate is gonna be 0.65 percent, which is a very favorable rate. So we recommend that the City Council approve both the bands for 2015 and the rollover of our previous bands. Any questions?
Questions, have a seat.
Can you give me a moment?
If you borrow $31 million, I think we're fine.
Mr. Mootier.
You talked about the 0.65 percent. It's active for a period?
It's for one year.
One year?
Yes.
And the other question is, $8.9 million in borrowing, is there, would there be future borrowing? Based on the $23 million was approved?
In the future? We probably feel, we feel like the consent order is probably in the future years, we're gonna probably have to borrow for the consent order. But we have determined that right now, it's not required. You know, we're gonna use the advantage of time to see what we can complete before the time of the money that we have to complete some of the projects instead of borrowing now, you know, borrowing when it's needed.
Perfect.
Good chance.
Other questions or comments?
No, I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
All right, any other business to come before the Finance Committee this evening?
Chair, motion?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll call City Development and Planning to order a number of ceremonial resolutions. The first is for SCCC Women's Bowling, National Championship. Second time. All in favor?
Aye.
And also for Men's Bowling, National Championship. I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Ceremony over National Autism Awareness Day, Mr. Kosher.
Yes, we're gonna present this at the Puzzles Bakery on April 2nd. So we'll not be doing it at the council meeting. But again, that's the ribbon cutting that's being held with the chamber. So we hope that as many of our council members in public can be there as well. And we're gonna put it in a nice frame as well, so we just don't throw these little resolutions around. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity, it's a wonderful group, and just a great way to make awareness for National Autism Day.
I would agree. All those in favor moves it? I will second it, all in favor? Aye. Ceremony over Women's History Month, this has already come through committee, we just had to hold it for a couple of weeks. So we'll be presenting that on Monday. And March is LGBT Health Month, Ms. Brazel?
Yes, and even though it says, the memo says it's from Lisa King, it's actually, it's actually for me. Yep, just that, just to promote the wellbeing of all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning people that are discriminated against based on their gender identity and expression. So it's always good to show our support in this area.
Yes, I would agree. Ms. Brazel moves it? I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the ordinance on convenience stores. And it's my understanding, I don't know if the mayor thinks of this at all, is it not gonna be open for two weeks or?
There was, we had received some, I apologize, what's the state organization? The general spoke. Stores. They had, Carl and I had met with them. They had sent in some recommendations, which I don't think came in until late last week. And so haven't reviewed those and get those back to council. And again, I will staff them to go through them to make some recommendations where we might be able to be sensitive to some of their needs, but at the same time, address the neighborhood concerns and the overall community needs that we're looking to deal with.
So we'll hold this for two weeks?
Yes.
If I could just have a question. I noticed next week, the planning commission has on their agenda to approve and operate a convenience store on State Street. So is this something, Rachel, that, are they holding these things or is this?
Yes, I believe so, as long as it was applied for during the moratorium. So I would have to check with Christine, which I can do. But I believe that everything is contingent on all of this.
So we would still put it on their agenda though, other than, I mean, why is it on their agenda is what my question is.
The only thing that I can think, yeah.
Existing convenience stores just chosen to ownership.
There may have been a change in tendency with it.
Proposal to operate convenience store at 1339 State Street.
Yeah. I support it.
It may be, 'cause I asked the same question. It may be that they've applied for that, it's just getting through their agenda. They could apply before the moratorium took place. So they have to look at that application, if the moratorium wouldn't apply. So that could be the case with that particular one.
And I'll follow up tomorrow and just send you an email. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
With Christine.
All right, and item number seven is gonna be an executive session. So if there's nothing else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll undertake a motion to recess. I will second that, all in favor? Aye.
Okay, I'll call Government Operations to order and a review of the Housing Standards Review Board review.
Again.
We'll be reviewing it.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, unless anybody has any questions or comments, I think it stands.
Is this the only thing? You know, the only thing that, I had a discussion the other day in that, what does this look like with situations like across the street? You know, where somebody's out of violation? Does this hinder that violation being fixed as quickly as possible? What are the implications on that? Does it slow the process down? You know what I mean? Is this gonna slow the process down in any way, shape, or form? I mean, I think that that's something the council has to consider. You know? Does this, and I think, I would like Carl to weigh in on it before we vote on this. I mean, I guess we can vote on it because we can ultimately decide not to appoint anyone to it, right, or make it active. But I think that that's really a consideration that we have to have. Is this going to cause any red tape in our codes department that could possibly endanger someone's life? You know? So again, I think we can pass it as it is, but before we make this board active, we have to have that conversation with Corporation Council or.
In the building inspector.
Right. Because I think that, you know, I mean, here we sit with a prime example of why this might be a dangerous road to go down. So do we wanna pass it tonight, do we wanna just hold it for a couple of weeks?
The proclamation would be to say hold it for a couple of weeks.
Let's make sure we get it right.
Should we call for a public hearing, or are we gonna hold?
We already have.
Public hearing.
Yep. So let's go ahead.
One thing I'd like to see added, I think for all boards it should be, not just this board, that any members appointed should be current on their taxes. And I think we should review this for all boards. Does the city have anything to do with the appointments?
That's fair enough. Oh, it's coming up?
Yeah, public hearing.
Schedule for this Monday.
Yeah, we already talked for it.
That out, so. We have the head. Pardon? No.
Right, so you can't have a.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
I had a really long weekend. I'm really fired. And also, I'm attached, I think that doesn't matter.
You can cross him.
Doesn't matter.
It's all right, we can celebrate.
No, 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 leave it to you guys. I'll stay home. Okay, so nothing on this? Anything else to come before Government Operations?
No.
Very good. Pass motion adjourned, I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Call to order Health and Recreation. It's time to renew the drought park agreement, and it's usually for one year, so something.
Yeah, we currently have a lease with the Gangster Mark Association through the Grounpark Management Committee to manage Grounpark. The lease expired 31st of December, and they're asking for a renewal.
All right. Yes, Ms. Brazel?
What kind of a system do we have in place to make sure other people are able to come forward with a proposal if they're interested in doing so? Right, like, just like the operations at the golf course or whatever? Do we have a process where somebody could come up forward and say, I'd like to, you know?
To use it.
Right.
Well, my interest, the way the lease is written, they have to work with other organizations to come in to use it. They basically kind of oversee the park? So are you saying so that they would, someone else would have the lease? Is that what you're asking?
Right, if another organization was interested in overseeing the park, I don't know that to be the case. But if we had someone else who was interested in doing that administrative role, do we have a process in place to allow someone to put a proposal in to lease the park?
No.
Yeah, this has been kind of designated as the cricket field.
Right.
This was the group, so that if the council wants to open it up, or, again, I'm not aware of any other interest at this point, the council wanted to open it up?
I think we should, all our processes should be open, right? I mean, it causes, you know, people to, I mean, it's just a fair way to do it, right?
Well, the thing about this particular park is that folks who play cricket are not allowed to play in any other parks. So to displace that, then what happens? Then what do we do?
No, I'm talking about another cricket organization coming in, and to my knowledge, there's still some unrest amongst the cricket organizations. So I'm just saying that if another cricket organization wanted to lease the park and oversee the administrative process of the park, what do we have in place to allow them to say how they would handle things? You know, to be open to the process.
That's not the case. All the cricket leagues are under the management of Grounpark Management Committee. They're all members on the board. There is a 15 members on the board. And there are three leagues, and each group is entitled to three members.
Right, but what I'm saying is.
And each one of them coordinated their schedule, and they use the park based on weekends and.
I think the past conflict they've worked out.
I'd differ differently.
Exactly.
At length.
And more the centralizing cricket to Grounpark also.
Right. So I just think we should have the ability to have an open process, because I don't know that all of the people involved are happy with the way things are going. So, you know, either we look at the process, I don't know how the, you know, does the city wanna get involved in that? I don't know, but I think we should have an open process.
Well, I think that folks, if folks have a concern, they should bring it to the Health and Recreation Committee. I haven't heard a word about that. And nobody's called and said, I'm not happy with the process, I'm, you know, they're taking over too much control or anything like that. And if you can't address the concerns, then no one's brought a concern.
They have not been any concerned, they're managing it well, you know, so best that they can.
There are concerns.
They were some concerns about usage, and that was ironed out to the last part of the season, and everybody is using it, rotating the schedule.
Right. And from what I know, that this committee, committees has not been meeting also, correct?
Well, they're not meeting because of the season. The season's over, and they should be meeting, I think, soon.
I will have them contact you.
That would be fine. Well, right now, we're just looking at trying to renew the lease, so it's not gonna be done today or tomorrow. But we do need to start discussing that, the park, the season's gonna be opening soon, so we do need to be able to have a lease in place. So if you could just have us, give us a copy of the current one, take a look at that, and then speak with, if our committee needs to meet.
Just a quick question, since I don't know. Does this encompass all of Grounpark, or just the field where they play cricket?
They're overseeing the entire Grounpark.
Yes, managing, cutting the grass, garbage, everything. They're entitled to.
But I mean, since it's a public park.
It's still open to the public.
Somebody wants to go in there and post something, they can still do it.
It's still open to the public, yes.
That's my concern.
And they cannot, the committee cannot bar anyone from using the park. It spells out in the lease.
This was just really up for discussion, so there's no action to take on today. Anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
So, so actually, Mayor Chair, so should we work on something that we could have in two weeks? Because again, they don't have a contract in place.
She's going to give us a copy of the next, of the current lease, the law department.
And we're gonna try to here, address any concerns that the other group may or may not have? Or they're gonna contact you?
Well, Ms. Brazel's gonna put them in touch with me, and then it's the Health and Recreation Committee, we could meet with them and just talk about it.
Yeah, 'cause the season's gonna be starting very quickly.
Things are starting early April.
Right.
She'll put me in touch with the folks that have a concern, and we'll, if a committee we need to meet, that's where we go.
Very nice.
Is there anything else to come before Health and Recreation?
No, I'm pushing, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna move to.
I can answer another question, my apologies. And I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Call to order claims.
We go into executive session.
Everything we're gonna discuss is executive session, then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
...